Happy New Year. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, January 3rd, 2022 to order per executive order and legislative action. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid fashion, some in person and some via the technology known as Zoom. With that, first order of business is pledge allegiance to Charles. Would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. Item two, public hearing on affordable housing tax incentive ordinance. I will, I will take the role as moderator, assuming my colleagues agree. Thank you. For those in the viewing audience. Pardon me?
We need a motion and everything.
I don't think so. It's not a town meeting, so, town meeting you wouldn't need to present. Okay. So, as this has been banging around our plate or table for a while, and I want to thank Chris Whitmer, Karen Kravitz, who is also on the line, and also Pete Barrett for getting it to this point. I think as you all recall, we were first approached by Chris Whitmer, who is an affordable housing developer here in town, actually has a wonderful development going up on State Street. And Chris brought to our attention that there are other municipalities that have affordable housing tax incentive programs, which can be applied in a couple of different ways. And Karen can certainly talk, Chris and Karen can talk to that in a minute. And what I want to do is I also want to put this against the backdrop of, we are in the process of working cooperatively with the regional council of governments to put together the state legislative required affordable housing plan, which needs to be submitted at the end of June of 2022. We're working with the council of governors who's doing a regional one, so we can use that regional plan. But this becomes an integral component of the affordable, our affordable housing plan and incentives for developers to build here in town. So I think this sort of dovetails with our legislative requirement to put a viable affordable housing plan together. So with that, what I'd like to do is, Chris, if you wouldn't mind just briefly summarizing, you know, why these types of programs are important to a developer and how it can make a difference relative to the affordability of affordable housing. Chris, you read it, I think?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, I'm Chris Whitmer, Green Planet Company. We are working on a relatively small homeownership project just north of, just north of town. And the idea came to me from one of our board members, Dave Anderson, who was a, who was a town planner in Madison. He brought that ordinance to my attention. And I suppose the chief objective is to maintain affordability for these, for these various projects. And ours is no exception, where we're developing these, as are other developers, on a kind of a shoestring budget and with some subsidy from state and federal sources. But generally, you know, things, it's a fairly difficult process and I think that the funding is limited. And so, in our case, we're kind of, we were sort of blessed to sort of step into a program that had already been established, but with limited subsidy. And I think that our sales prices of the houses that we're developing are in the $250,000 range, which is fairly, fairly low, but affordable to people at or below 80% of the area needing income, which is really our mission. And I think we're, we're a little different than rental development in that rental developments tend to, in order to score well on some of these funding applications, they have to skew their area meeting income recipients lower. And so, a lot of, a lot of housing developments will incorporate 50% or even 25% of the area needing income in order to score well enough to get, to get funded under these competitive programs. So taxes play a huge role in that. And I think that, from my perspective, the idea, so, these houses that we're developing are, you know, would probably appraise to, in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. And, and if taxed at that amount, would pretty much limit who could, who could afford to live there. Our goal or our, our sort of mantra is to get these houses built and have people at 80% or below buy them with their principal interest taxes and insurance at or below 25, or at or below 30% of their income. So that's a kind of a general HUD formula, and I think that's one that we've been working with. So the idea of taxing, taxing these affordable, and the other thing I should mention is that all of the affordable developments that will be occurring in Guilford and are generally occurring now are deed restricted. So there really isn't a lot of wiggle room as far as raising rents or prices, et cetera. And so, for us, we are, we are deed restricted. The annual appreciation can only be 2.5%. And that means that five, 10 years down the road, if somebody buys one of these and wants to sell it to somebody, they have to sell to somebody at 80% of the area meeting income or below at a price that meets that 30% criteria. So that was a little long-winded, but hopefully we've got the information out there. Karen, did you want to add something to that? Or?
Oh, I say there's no way to do this short-winded, as I'm sure you know, of what you said, that you fully develop affordable housing taxes and is an essential component to make these deals work.
And just Chris or Karen, the deed restricted is how many years?
On our, on our project, we had sort of agreed with the state to deed restrict for a 30-year period. And that sort of coincides with the, with the mortgage. We're assuming everybody who moves in will have a 30-year mortgage. And I think longer than that really defeats the purpose of this pride of homeownership, which we're trying to encourage and promote. So for us, 30 years is what we've, we've agreed to. And I think also the towns, Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, insisted on a 30-year, 30-year affordability period. So that's, that's, that's our model.
Questions?
Ours says 40 years.
Yeah. I think, I think we're, this is a work in progress in terms of 30 or 40. We can adjust it as appropriate. Karen, I don't know if you want to, Karen or Pete, you want to talk to the flexibility we have here?
You know what? Yeah, let me just jump in. I don't know if you had a chance to introduce Karen Kravitz, Sussman, Duffy and Segaloff practices in this area. So we asked her to participate in drafting the ordinance. So I'll pitch it to her. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everybody. Thank you. So the, basically, the ordinance was based on the requirements of two statutes, 8215 and 830G. Eight, 40-year restrict. The goal of the statute, or of the ordinance was to give the town the maximum flexibility while also meeting the requirements under 830G, so that this housing will count toward the town's 10% threshold.
I just would want to add that there is a, in my mind, there's a significant difference between affordable homeownership and affordable rental. And I think with rental, you're really gonna, you're gonna have a 40-year period regardless. And I don't know if there's a way, Karen, to, to structure this in such a way that where there's sort of 30 years for homeownership and 40 for rental. But with rentals, it's typically, that, that's part of the scoring criteria as well. So I think most rental developments will have a longer affordability period. So just my thought.
Definitely maximum flexibility. So I think Chris and I can just, and make sure that if, if you would still get credit under 830G, that certainly fine.
Yeah. Who enforces the deed restriction 15 years out, if it's transferred?
Well, the ordinance provides that, and so, statute, that requirements are not followed, that abatement, number one, can be ceased, and number two, can be recouped by the town. So if a homeowner were to sell the property not in compliance with the deed restriction, the town, first of all, the property would no longer be tax abated. Second of all, the town could sue the home for tax abatements previously granted.
I think Lou's point was, who's watching this store? Who's minded, you know, who's the sheriff on this? When a property comes through, the town clerk will see that it's deed restricted, right? Or should the attorneys, is it, is it the buyer and the seller's attorneys? Who is the one that is supposed to make sure that that happens?
Because if it's everybody, it's nobody.
Yeah.
But I'll just jump in here. You know, any purchase, there's an attorney that will do a title search. And a buyer's attorney will see that deed restriction and will want to assure compliance or at least discuss that with the other attorney. So that, that's one very certain way.
Please, you know, I'm assuming these things are done, you know, obviously they're done in other communities throughout the state. So there's probably a series of best practices related to ensuring that, you know, the deed restrictions are in fact adhered to. So again, I think this will be a learning process. I'm sure we could have conversations with other town clerks to figure out a process to trigger, trigger that. However, that might be a little bit late, right?
I'm sort of curious, is the town, is the housing authority keeping an eye on this over time?
It's a clear title. I mean, the box, it's got to be checked in order to transfer a clear title.
I, I got it. I, and the private system can probably, most of the time adhere to that?
I would think by the tax collector and/or assessor's office, and that may be the place where, you know, obviously that would be after the fact. But yes, I would think that any buyer or seller's attorney representing someone in that closing would note the deed restriction and counsel their clients on both sides that if that provision was violated, what the consequences would be.
Yeah. Also, with regard to the deed restriction, we have a specific formula that goes along with the restrictive covenant that gets filed on the, on the land records, that dictates the, the actual sale price and, and also the, the income level of the person moving in. So that's part of the deed, deed document. And the other thing too is that, I know that with rental development, the, the developer is beholden to, if they're using low income housing tax credits, they're, they're beholden to CHFA, who will, you know, ensure that, you know, that the apartments in the development may, are kept at, at certain income levels. In, in the, in the case of homeownership, we are relying a little bit on this deed, deed restriction document. But also, there is, at least in our development, there is some ongoing, proposed ongoing management and, and oversight. So I think that, and again, as you said, Matt, it is a work in progress. So we're a little bit, we're working through some of that and exploring options in terms of how we achieve that. But I think we're all kind of on the same page that we want to see this maintained, we want to see this affordability maintained, so.
Any other questions or Karen or, I know Karen, you forward along something earlier this morning, sort of a, which I copied for folks here, I don't have an opportunity to take a look at it. But what was, I think was important was the example on the back. Okay, so I'm giving everybody just a quick second to take a look at it. Karen, you want, you want to walk us through that?
Sure. Just the example. Yep, so I just used the area median income, Guilford area per HUD, which is issued by HUD every year, excuse me. And if you take, so that's $93,000 for a family. 80% of that is $4,000. And the restricted resale price would be approximately 2.5 times that to keep it affordable. So that would, so your assessment, the most, the way, the abatement that makes the most sense for these homeowners is to only tax them for the value of their home if they were to sell it in any revale period. And it's restricted. So it would be if their taxes, what they could actually sell it for in that revale period, their tax would be $400. I just arbitrarily used a comparable home that was approximately $100,000 more. Obviously, Chris is saying these houses are going to be a perfect $100. That's a significant difference, you know, that would be even more tax savings to the homeowner. But you can see what the difference would look like just if with $100,000 more in market.
Just a quick question. Thank you for the examples. They're very helpful to me. The issue is, this is a, this is a starting point, right? This is stagnant, right? The first, this is, this is day one of the program. What happens in year five or year seven? Because I seem to recall some language about some escalation in the value because, which would also tie itself to the area median income starting to slide as well. So there was, there was some, there was some discussion early on about tying the, the increase in the property values to a fixed number, 2.5% per year, or tie it to some other index, cost of living, et cetera. Is that contemplated with what we're doing here?
Well, it's not contemplated by this ordinance. And I think that would, like you said, Matt, I just wanted to say generally that this is the beginning and this is a highly complex area. Obviously, this can be modified and amended in the future and added to in other ways. And just doing research on this, I looked at North Stonington, and they have an affordable housing committee that meets regularly and discusses these issues and makes recommendations to their legislative body. So that's something to be considered. But yes, I believe, and Chris could probably speak to this with more specificity, that they are allowed some appreciation in the resale value over time. And presumably, the assessor would also use that every five years when doing the revaluation.
Yeah. I, I think that I've sort of gone off the Madison criteria and their, their formula or their, their, what they do is basically they reevaluate every year by adding 2.5% or whatever the appreciation, the limit of the appreciation can be to the original base, base number, and then tax on that value. So the taxes will change. Theoretically, the checks, taxes could change every year, assuming that the property goes up in value, which it would unlikely, would be likely. So the one, the one question I have for Karen is, so, is the 2.5% of the AMI, that's adjusted for family size, right? The AMI in that situation?
Yeah.
And does that limit the cost that you could sell the house for initially? Or is it, or is that sort of going forward? Because if we take that number, it means that our, our sale price can only be, you know, quite low. I mean, if you take two and a half times, say, $70,000, that's a relatively low number. And it's not, for us, that's, that wasn't part of our thinking, that, that it would be that low. So what are your thoughts on that?
Well, in order to qualify as affordable, under 8215 and 830G, it has to be no more than, than the cost, more than 30% of a, 80 or below the area median.
Right. Karen, we're, we're having difficulty hearing you. You're breaking, you're, you're cutting in and out. So you may have to repeat what you just said.
Sorry about that. In order to be considered affordable, is that, is that better?
Yeah.
Yes.
Or, under both statutes, you have to be at 30%. So they're, they can't be overburdened in terms of costs. So your target family is at 80% of the area median income and their homeownership or rental can't be any more than 30%. So that's where that number comes from, 2.5 times the median income. So, you know, you're, I understand you, you've already been through your funding process and all of that, and decision for the town. But in order to qualify under the statutes for potential reimbursement from the state or to be part of the 10%, yes, it would have to be more than 30%.
Okay. Let's check into that and see, and see what, what that, what that involves. It almost, it almost works with just the area meeting income. So if you took the $93,000 figure and multiplied that by 2.5%, you'd be at about $235,000, which is below what some of our units are going to sell for, but kind of in that general area. So I think we may be able to work that in, but I'm not sure if that, so then you, and assuming that people within that kind of range are still at 30% of their income for housing expenses, that was sort of our, that was our model, essentially, that. So maybe that needs a little more investigation.
Mark tweaking, yeah, I think it does. Any other questions from board members at this point?
Administrative work on the town on an ongoing basis.
I think we've heard reference that the tax assessor, the tax collector or tax assessor would probably have primary responsibility to, for ensuring that they're taxed at the appropriate rate. Chris had mentioned something about possibly their taxes going up every, every year. Well, that, that's a function of the mill rate, not a function of their property value. So I don't see it adjusting except for the, the five and 10-year revaluation cycles.
But even that, if I'm understanding it correctly, it's limited to 2.5%.
Correct. That's the goal.
Yeah.
Or, or some other index that we, Madison picked 2.5%.
All right, I got it.
So that's an annual mechanical calculation. What about the certification that needs to be made at the time of the application? If I understand correctly, essentially, the project would not meet the affordability guidelines without the abatements, but would meet it with the abatement. Do we need to verify that? Do we need to continue to monitor that in any way at all?
So if you want me to speak to that, you know, there's, yes, so before the Board of Selectmen would vote on the tax abatement contract, you would evaluate that certification. And then the applicant is required to provide information on an ongoing basis that they are an annual certification, that they are continuing to comply with any of those requirements of the abatement. And at any time, if it is found that there's not compliance, then the town has the remedies of partially or wholly ceasing the abatement and recouping the funds.
So if we were to create a commission or perhaps assign this responsibility to an existing commission?
Well, I, I don't think, I, I think maybe, I don't know the purview also of the Guilford Housing Authority, because our, our committee is that committee, not even a commission. So I don't even know how much power we have on that. I also wonder if it would be something that would be on the responsibility list of the town planner who was ever acting in that as to, to check on that once a year? Or is it, does it fall under the responsibility of the assessor's office, the way they have to verify people's credentials every year to be, to qualify for the, I can't think of the name of it, the?
Exempt, exemption.
Yeah, exemption for the, yeah. I mean, because that's kind of a procedure that's in place and seems to be working. So it, I think, I don't think we need a new commission, and I'm not saying it couldn't be our committee, but I still think it might have to be with people who are coming to work every day and have certain responsibilities to make sure that certain things happen, you know, if, if maybe just once a year, but whatever. Do you see what I'm saying on this? I don't, you know?
I, I think there will be some significant details that we worked out in the, in the phase of any, any program. And again, I'm not suggesting we're, that we will act at the end of, during our meeting on this, as we have the opportunity to try to massage this into something that everybody's comfortable with.
Charles, so when Karen said, I must have misunderstood, then you, does this board of Sussman or this board selectmen have to vote on each one at the beginning of application? And we're talking about, what we call the initial application is this, this, it falls to this one. That's under state statute.
Yeah, that's under state statute, that the legislative body has to make that action, like the league. In this case, it's us. Any other questions or comments? Any from the public? Anyone from the public wishing to address or ask questions relative to this? Okay, hearing none. I will call the public hearing on affordable housing tax incentive ordinance as closed. We will be deliberating and discussing at another point during our meeting. So anyone who wants to stay around and suffer through the balance of our meetings, you're welcome. Okay, public forum, general public forum. We're going to do three minutes on any agenda items. Is there anyone wishing to address this? Hearing none. Let's move on to item four. Item four is to receive a presentation by Zen City. And I think, folks, as you may recall, we had a conversation, had some conversations around engaging Zen City to help us conduct surveys in the community relative to the moratorium, the marijuana moratorium we put in place. And Jonathan Sepir, if I butchered your last name, and I apologize, Jonathan, is with Zen City, and we've been going back and forth for a little while. And what I've suggested, Jonathan, is that this is, in our minds, that we're going to have a series of community engagements over the next couple of months related to where the community feels we ought to be going with this. Quite honestly, with what's going on with COVID, we're not going to be able to do it in the way we might like to. So I think we'll probably be doing some of these. But we have given ourselves till the end of June. One of the reasons I was considering engaging Zen City was for us to gauge the community to see whether or not this is a significant, A, a significant issue of concern to the community, B, which side of the, you know, which side of the, you know, the aisle they're falling on this issue. And then C, if it seems to be a significant issue, would we want to consider an advisory question on the referendum on, on this? So my thoughts were, this type of survey could help, help inform us as to how we want to proceed comprehensively. So with that, I know there were some concerns about the validity and the methodology and the validity of a survey being done, particularly being done utilizing these things. these things, which we can't live without anymore. And and also just social media in general. So Jonathan, if you wouldn't mind just walking through with with us, and I think Tracy, can you share? Give give Jonathan the opportunity to share his screen?
Perfect. Thank you very much. Hi, my name's Jonathan Shafir. So Mr. Hovey, you pronounced that quite well, actually. So well done. Board of Selectmen, Town Leadership Members and Attendees, firstly, thank you for having me. And secondly, Happy New Year. Very delighted to have a conversation with you today to dive a little bit deeper as to what we look to do for town leadership and residents in terms of our survey work. Before I share my screen, can everyone hear me just okay? Wonderful. So just to give a little bit of background, I I know that maybe some of you are quite familiar with the type of work that we do for the town of Guilford already. Maybe just to bring everyone up to speed. We're a local government exclusive vendor, so we only work with towns, cities, boroughs, counties, et cetera, et cetera. And our main mission is to help town leadership better engage, better understand, better connect with their hard to reach residents, the ones whose voices don't often reach senior leadership, if that makes sense. So we already partnered with the town of Guilford on a whole heap of different issues, a lot of polling work as well. Over the last few weeks, we've been discussing with Mr. Hovey around about this one moratorium, this one particular ordinance that's it might be worth to dig a little deeper, to get a little bit more statistically significant analysis on this on this particular matter. And this is something that we're able to do as well for cities and towns. So in amongst analyzing resident feedback and aggregating and summarizing resident publicly available talking points, we're able to publish and promote and push out surveys on specified topics to achieve two things. One, get you a statistically significant resident number. But more importantly, to get the results to be a town representative sample set. We want your responders to any particular survey that we run to look like your resident population, if that makes sense. So before I go too far forward, I super duper want this to be very informal and conversational. So if anyone has any questions or concerns, please feel free to raise them. We'll build it into the presentation.
That's fine. You you should learn that people are not shy when they have questions.
That's okay. I'm I'm actually I'm in Melbourne, Australia today, so I've been becoming very accustomed to the Australian casualness. So I very much appreciate that. Wonderful. So to ensure that we get a town representative sample set. The first thing we do is we actually look at your census related data. And we know that when we want to push out a survey, we need to ensure that when results come back and respondents come back that the response rate mirrors what's going on within your community. So we take into consideration all the important, all the different demographics, age, gender, sex, ethnicity, race, income, location, et cetera, et cetera. So that we know that when you've got a twenty two thousand population, it's not just good enough to have, well, we've got seven hundred and fifty responders. We need your whatever the number would be, seven hundred and fifty to be broken down into all the different demographics. So that we're meeting all these different quotas when we actually present you the results. As such, it's interesting hearing that conversation around about affordable housing. We need to making sure that we're looking at all the different demographics that make up your community. And knowing that when we present the results back to you, that we can show this, not just on a question by question basis, but on a demographic by demographic basis. Now.
Are you? Are you walking through a presentation? Because we're not seeing anything here.
Let me let me try that again. Hold on.
Matt, I think it's on your end. If you hit the content button on the controller, you should be able to see it on your screen.
Okay.
Was we're we're out the people able to see the screen?
Not yet.
Yes, the people at home.
Yeah, I I can see it on my screen.
Oh, interesting.
Okay.
The share content button comes up and says participants' screen sharing was disabled. What about changing view? Content only, maybe?
Fantastic. So let me let me start. Let me try that again. So everyone can see my screen?
Yes.
Fantastic. I'll go back half a step. So we look at your census data. And we know that your response rate needs to mirror what your population looks like. So we take into consideration all the various different demographics that make up a community, age, gender, sex, ethnicity, language, income, location. So that when we need to get to that statistically significant number threshold, it actually comes back in all the different number quarters that actually make up our community. Once we know what the topic is, this is something that's obviously chosen by the town. Sounds like it's we have a pretty clear topic at hand. You would work pretty closely with our survey analyst team and our data analyst team to build that question set accordingly. So it's like, okay, we know that like we want to ask about this particular topic. Then it's like working with our survey expert team to better understand what type of questions we should ask. What type of open ended questions we should ask, what type of close ended questions we should ask? How should we order the questions so that we actually get people to not just start the survey, but also complete the survey, which is a massive challenge when it comes to pushing our surveys to residents? And also just how long the survey should be. We try and keep it to that healthy medium, that Goldilocks zone of not too many questions, not too few questions, but that just right. So that we can actually get a solid amount of data or solid amount of feedback without obviously leading to survey fatigue for our residents. Once we're ready, and once you guys are comfortable with the questions, or we're together aligned as to what those questions should be, we obviously know the topic. The rest is up to Zen City to run the survey, collect responses, and write up the analysis. Now, as and Mr. Hovey mentioned, our primary method of survey is digital distribution. We can supplement it with other more traditional methods as well, but I'll start with the digital component, too. So when we, especially as Mr. Hovey mentioned, this COVID time, it can be very tricky to get residents, especially if we need to send something out, as everyone checking their postal mail all the time, if we need to stand outside a nearest bank or Walgreens. People going there and feeling comfortable, talking to a stranger, if that makes sense. So we've decided that the most efficient method to actually get to our residents is to reach residents where we spend our most time, which is sadly our telephones. So this is just a photo of my girlfriend and my cat. But the the goal is to actually reach residents where we spend our most time so that we can actually engage residents accordingly. So how how is that we do it? We partner with the digital ad networks to publishize and advertise surveys to residents within your community within the walls of your town, if that makes sense. So if you're within the walls of this town, you might now get an ad that asks you to participate in a survey, the same way that you might get an ad to say discount toothpaste at nearest Walgreens. Or if you're on your favorite news website on Facebook or Next or wherever it is, and you might get an ad, a banner that says anything. There's now a possibility there'll there'll be an ad that, you know, advertisers, hey, Guilford residents, how do you feel about providing feedback about the upcoming cannabis moratorium, if that makes sense? Any questions so far before I go too far into the nitty gritty?
Go ahead, John.
Excellent. So by also leveraging the digital ad networks and mobile phones, there's a good chance we can already start to semi filter for some of those demographics. There's a good chance that my phone knows that I'm a thirty four year old white male. So it will automatically know to start advertising to me if we need to fill up that quota. As soon as those particular quotas are filled, the males between white males between twenty five and thirty four, we will just stop advertising to this particular demographic and just double our attentions on demographics that are a little bit weaker in the response rate. At the same time, we can also just wait the examples as well. So if we don't feel like cutting off the white males between twenty five and thirty four, we can just wait my responses accordingly. We also do double verify. So as part of every survey, we do ask residents to self select their demographics, if that makes sense as well. And these surveys can be typically around about twelve to eighteen questions long, depending on the topic at hand. And the whole process from ideation to coming up with questions to running the results, sorry, running up the survey, collecting results and doing a write up takes anywhere between minimum four weeks and maximum eight weeks. And it really depends on the time of the year, of course, as well. Essentially, once we start asking questions, because it's in real time, we can actually see questions that are having really engaging response rates and questions that may be confusing residents from time to time. So we can actually adjust the survey in real time as well. Now, and I know some of you might be thinking, Jonathan, that's all well and good, but like, you know, there are some residents that might wish to participate in the survey, and they just didn't receive the ad, they just didn't receive the banner. That's I'm sure that might have been popping around someone's head at some stage in this presentation. So what we can do on multiple fronts is supplement this with existing tools. This is an example that we've done with Chicago PD where they actually advertise the survey on their website so that they can get self selection as well. Residents, particularly the ones that are super engaged and really want to provide feedback, here's your opportunity to do so. We can also supplement it with more traditional methods as well, QR codes or phones or anything like that. But pure from a pure scientific perspective, what we love to do is to run it from a digital outreach and use these other methods as an internal benchmark. We know that this is what our residents naturally organically provided when we outreach them on a quota by quota basis. And this is the internal self selection comparison that we can potentially use as well. Once we're ready, once we've got the response, once we've got the results and the quotas have been met, we complete the survey and then we start to do the write up analysis. I'll share a quick example, just what this can look like. This is for a county in Georgia that we work with. So I know we're talking about cannabis moratorium, but just to mention, because we only work with local governments, all our surveys are local government focused. So this is just one that we've done really recently on mandatory trash collection. So we actually analyzed each question, question by question, demographic by demographic, and then presented this to the senior leadership within the county itself to help them understand resident concerns, resident wishes, resident desires, resident pushbacks around mandatory trash collection, which programs are going to be more incentive, more encouraged than others, if that makes the best sense. Likewise, we've done a lot of surveys recently on how best to towns and cities should spend its American Rescue Plans excellence and what type of priorities, what type of programs, what type of initiatives residents are more engaged upon, similarly, broken down demographic by demographic, question by question. Excellent. I'm happy to take. I'm always happy to speak longer, but I'm always happy to take questions as well.
All right, Jonathan, is you have anything further on the presentation, Jonathan?
I thought I'd keep it quite light for today. Always the first one of selectmen meeting for the year. I believe there's a question in the in the participants list, but I'm very poor at multitasking. So let me stop sharing my screen and see if someone's sorry, someone's was trying to join Karen Cravitz, so I'll just let her in. I guess, because I think Tracy made me host temporarily, so.
Thank you for letting Karen back in.
Sorry, Karen, I didn't see you in the waiting room. I'll make you host again, Tracy. I know how to.
Jonathan, I do have a question. Have there been any other communities that have thought about engaging you for this very specific type of survey? I know that there are other communities in Connecticut who are wrestling with the same decision, some of which may be, I think, are already Zen City clients, because I know you have others in the state of Connecticut. Is anybody else looking at this as a potential tool?
Looking absolutely. Have we have we ran a completed the survey not on a cannabis moratorium? Not quite yet, but we are in the process of launching one in New Jersey as well, which has very similar launch patterns as you guys, if that makes sense.
I do have a question. I'm not really sure if this is for Jonathan or just something for us to discuss, but a survey like this, is there a mechanism for us to evaluate how well informed the person responding is, as opposed to just somebody with a gut reaction that really doesn't know some of the, you know, someone who's really thought through the pros and cons?
Is it? Yeah, I would assume that you might want to do that in some kind of open ended question, or maybe even a couple of closed ended questions to to pull out a characteristic that that would satisfy what you're asking, right?
That's a perfect question. It's so there's a couple of mechanisms. It's and it comes up not just in this particular topic, but other other topics as well. How do we? It sounds like how do we best inform residents before they start to just give their opinion on something which might be on instant gut reaction based on considered issues? Is that my understanding? If I understood that correctly?
Yeah, without swaying in one way or another.
Exactly. So there's there's two things we can buffer up the survey at the start with just a little bit more information, whether it's in the question itself or just at the start of the survey. Hi, everyone, just to let you know, we're planning to vote on this in March twenty nine. These are the issues at play. We'd love your feedback on these particular things. So we can start the survey with more of an information based proposition. But then absolutely, as Mr. Hovey just alluded to as well, we can leverage open and questions to say I can't think of a perfect example, but like, if this was to play out, what's the biggest thing you'd be encouraged about? What's the biggest thing you'd be concerned about? Type of thing in this particular format. So we can not guide them through a question, but layer with an open ended question to help them encourage to get more open and feedback rather than just like very good to very bad scale, if that makes sense. I'm not too sure. Did that answer the question?
Yeah.
Jonathan, please don't take this wrong, but there has been a significant amount of condemnation is the right word, or criticism over polling in general. Particularly as it relates to the business we're in, political polling, which seems to have lost a significant amount of credibility over the last couple of years, because they don't seem to get it right in many cases. How are you guys different with something with what you're doing?
Yeah, so sorry. Yeah, I mean, I like not to make this a federal thing, but even I saw the most recent poll that I saw was like one in three Americans, something about those in relation to the January sixth one year anniversary, I read just this morning, this morning my time at the very least, whereas like one in three Americans find that violence towards federal government is justified, something like that. And even I couldn't believe my eyes. I was like, that that can't be that can't be something that makes it just didn't make sense to my eyes. Something that we look to do and something that we certainly achieve as part of Zen City is that we are only looking at your your township. We're not like looking at the broad area. We're not looking at the county. We're not looking at the state. We're literally just looking at the borders within your township and verifying and asking, ensuring that they're residents and following up with the other board of selectmen member. We do try and buffer it up with with information and education as part of our survey process to ensure that we're actually getting the right, not just people, not just the right people responding, but right, the people responding with the right mindset. And this is why we tried, we focus very heavily on both a leveraging your demographics to making sure that it's a city or town representative sample set. But more importantly, that we're actually really trying to reach those hard to reach residents where it's like, well, if we're not actually engaging a particular demographic, because the response rate is low. I could classic example, maybe for a Spanish speaking community, we will advertise in Spanish. We will advertise the survey in Spanish and even run the survey in Spanish to ensure that that particular demographic actually those barriers to completion, those barriers to delivery is actually lowered completely, if that makes sense. That's just one particular example, but I hope that gives a bit of flavor. deliver, uh, delivery is actually lowered completely, if that makes sense. That's just one particular example, but I hope that gives a bit of flavor as to how we uh work uh with local governments.
Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, any other questions at this point? Jonathan, thank you very much for your time. Uh, I'll be following up with you uh at, at some point, so uh, we'll probably have a discussion, maybe it's not on the agenda today, but maybe under our business, we have uh, have some discussion around it, so.
I think it's a great idea.
I, 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 I thought it was a pretty good idea. I just wanted to make sure you guys were comfortable with it, particularly the methodology. And to your question, how do we know we're getting the right people? So that, that, which begs another question, Jonathan. Uh, one of the notes I had here, um uh, at one point, I was uh seventeen years old. And if I had filled out a survey about whether or not they should raise the drinking age to twenty-one, and I had the opportunity to weigh in on it, I might have done that, uh, maybe on more than one occasion, encouraged everybody else to do it. So are, are we talking about restricting or, or, you know, or analyzing this with an eye for, well, we have a, a, a segment, a twenty-one and under segment, or under twenty-one segment. Uh, not that that necessarily matters, because the larger question is resale or not resale, not the age, but there might be a generation or of, of folks who would weigh more heavily one way or the other. So, is it, is that, is that something you take into consideration as well?
So excellent. So there's two questions there. One is uh around about like uh multiple completion. Because uh for the primary method of digital distribution, uh, we uh, we rely have uh once uh your IP address is collected, you will no longer be able to receive uh the advertisement. Uh, you can't actually complete it twice. Yes, you could probably take your best friend's or your girlfriend's phone and fill it out like, no, but that's same as going to your neighbors and filling in, going through their mail and so we can't actually complete the survey twice, which is uh, which is fantastic. And just to share, like, for specific, specific surveys, we can leverage existing tools like uh, whether there's a phone line that someone can call and we can and take down the survey responses there. So we can supplement it with more traditional methods, um, where appropriate to do so as well.
All right, Jonathan, thank you. Any, uh, any else? Jonathan, thank you very much. Well done.
Uh, thank you very much. Tracy, I'm, I still host, because if I accidentally drop off, I just don't want to end the meeting.
No, I, I took it, I took it back. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Okay, uh, item five, approval minutes of December twentieth, twenty twenty-one, uh, regular meeting. Is there a motion? A second.
Second.
Uh, any comments, questions, changes? I have none.
I have two quick clarifications.
Okay.
Uh, under item two, regarding the transfer from, of the premium credits for the bonding.
Yep.
I think it, the sentence is starting, they are still receiving good credits on the refunding. I think we should say premium credits. We should just add that word premium. I mean, and then I would, this concept of juice made the first few times I heard it. Anybody's reading this cold would just be helped. So they're still receiving good premium credits, okay?
Yeah, and, and is the pronoun appropriate as a they or should it be we?
The town.
The town, yeah.
All right, so not a big deal, but I think clarification was. And then the next one is also helpful. This is to under item five, first paragraph and second sentence on bottom. The contingency was confusing to me as, as Rick was going through that. I think I just withdrawn the word also. He is also included at ten percent contingency. The price was two eighty-two.
Yeah.
They're adding a ten percent contingency. That's how we get to the three hundred. Then there's the money for the, for that as well, so. Just I think if you were to add the word also, he's also, so, and he referring to the donor, obviously.
All right, uh, hearing nothing else, let me try your minds. Uh, in the Zoom world, select woman, Ruah. Hi. In the room, uh, all in favor? That motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item six, finance director. Uh, and director of human resources, that will be Mary Jane and Mitch.
Good morning. Uh, thank you for having us this morning. Um, we're gonna tag-team this a little bit. Uh, we have met with um a gentleman by the name of Rod Nevens and discussed his program Slim Nation uh, with our medical consultants and with representatives from the Board of Ed's Human Resource and Finance departments. So this will eventually be a joint recommendation. We're here today to get your thoughts and approval on this. Mitch is gonna talk about the program itself and where that stands, and then I'll end up with the the funding and, and what we're looking from you today, and we'll go from there. Mitch?
Thanks, Mary Jane. Um, a couple of months ago, uh, Police Chief uh Hyatt came to see me and wanted to see if we could put something like this together for police officers, because it was a very successful operation with the Clinton Police Department. Um, I asked to meet with someone uh from Clinton and Chief Hyatt and Chief DeMayo from the Clinton Police Department met right here in this room and with Rob Nevens and discussed his program with uh Chief DeMayo lauding the efforts that went through this and how he personally uh felt a lot healthier, lost some weight and, and as did so, some of his officers. Um, when uh Chief Hyatt and I have discussed it further, we felt that this was something, why should we just uh, limit it to police officers? We should look to the entire uh town, the town employees and try to see if there's a way to get our, our town employees healthier. Uh, and for the research, we developed, we discovered that uh Madison Milford and Southington, as well as Meriden had also used Mr. Nevens' program with much success, and I discussed this with specifically with the uh HR directors over in Madison and Milford, uh, as well as, as I said, with Chief DeMayo. And in both Madison and Milford, they're on their second or third round of this now, because it's been successful enough that people signed up. So what some of their colleagues were doing and said, wait a minute, what are you doing? And they said, we signed up. Well, I should have signed up too. And they got on and done this again, again. Um, it's a six-month program. Uh, Mr. Nevens will put together a uh individual uh, program for each person that does sign up. And it works with everyday foods. I can't explain it as well as he could, but we did give you a copy of his uh, his uh promotional materials, but yeah, it works with everyday foods. There's no special foods. It's a, it's a, a tiny effort of, of having people spend a couple of days not eating anything uh carb, with carbs and then loading up the next day. It's, it's, it's confusing to me, but it seemed to work. And people are very, very excited over it and have, have, uh, are, are praising the success of it. When he first came to see us, his, his cost per person was eight ninety-five per person for a six-month program. He reduced that because of the fact that he was gonna be working with a group of people through municipality. And in further discussion with Mr. Nevens, uh, pushed him a little harder because of the way we want to push this. Uh, he has dropped his price to five hundred fifty dollars per participant. Um, and we've had discussions with the Board of Education representatives as well as uh, our own consultants um, uh, from Lindbergh Ripple about this. They did some research into it as well and also felt that it was a very successful program. So we'd like to roll this out to our employees in the very near future. Uh, we do need your approval to go ahead with this, and Mary Jane's gonna explain a little bit more about uh how we would propose funding it. MJ?
So um, in our discussions uh with our consultants and the Board of Ed, uh, we feel uh strongly that this is a good use of our medical fund, um, funding. The expensive this will not go through the regular anthem claims, because it is more of a wellness program, not an actual medical claim. Uh, so we've done some research. We've tried to come up with some numbers for you. Based on other towns' experience, we estimate that the town may um start with approximately twenty people out of all of its employees, which would be a cost of about eleven thousand dollars. Which uh, we're hoping uh, we, to seek your approval from the medical fund. Um, in total, the Board of Ed is also having the same con- uh, conversation. Uh, Linda Trudeau and Sharon Milroy will be presenting to them, same as Mitch, as I uh am today. Uh, we estimate maybe the Board of Ed might have about twenty-two people for about three, thirteen thousand dollars on the first go-around. Um, and so we are seeking your approval, uh, not only to move forward with the program for employees and spouses. And I will just clarify that this would be for any employee. They do not have to be on the medical plan. Uh, we feel it is to the benefit of the town, uh, that all of our employees be offered this opportunity. Uh, so we're looking for your approval to fund this uh through the medical fund and to make that recommendation to the Board of Finance. Um, we hope the Board of Education will come to um that conclusion as well. And then at the next Board of Finance meeting, um, we will jointly request um funding from the medical fund. But, do you guys have any questions for either Mitch or I?
Mary Jane, just want to clar- clarify one thing. You said out of the medical fund, uh, we're talking about the surplus uh that we have, which is nearly what? Uh, it's over five millions uh in, in the, in the surplus at this point?
Correct. We are looking um to use the surplus money for this. We have spoken to our consultants. They have um given us uh, their recommendation. You'll see from our menu, from our memo, uh, that they consider this an appropriate use of that funding as well.
Considering this level of funding, you know, have we compared it to the companies that make this a lot of money?
Yeah, um, we, we, we've been approached time and again, well, from a couple of different people over the years. And we've had certain programs we've rolled out to employees in the past, um, that have had modicum of success. This one seems to be one that's worked very well with other, other towns, which is the reason why we decided to go forward with it, especially after it was recommended that the police department was looking to do something with this.
But this has not gone through a bid process rating?
It's not gone through a bid process, no. But we have, we have done some full vetting of this.
You know, uh, I don't, I'm not sure. Uh, this is a professional services engagement, so Pete, uh, Pete, are you, are you still here? Question, question is, is this typically a service that you would have to go out to bid for? Question is, does this fall within uh professional services, professional or consultative services?
All right, give me the type of service again, Matt. I'm sorry.
This is the SLIP, this is the Slim Nation, which is the um, the program that we're looking to put in place for employees to uh, to do weight control, weight loss, weight and uh uh, more healthy eating habits, uh, Rob Nevens' plan.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think, you, you know, my first blush, I don't think that's um the type of professional services contemplated by the purchasing exemption.
Peter, can I, can I ask you what the threshold is for um needing to go out to bid?
You mean financially or for? Yeah, twenty-five thousand.
Well, we, we asked, we really don't know how many employees will um join this, but we estimate our first go-around to be about eleven thousand, so I'm not sure if that makes a difference or not.
And I'm not, I'm not sure how you would bid this to, it's, it's, I wouldn't say it's unique, unique, but it's a program that I don't know if anybody else can bid the same way. It's like comparing, you know, one weight loss program to a, to a, to a healthy eating program to to another one. I mean, there's so many of them out there, but it's, it's really it, it, like I say, we, I would consider more of the professional services just from the nature of it being unique in, in that respect, that I don't think when that will sound bid, quite frankly.
Well, yeah, professional services and unique are two different concepts under the, if it is unique, then you could uh, you could justify it as a sole source. Now, now remember, this is for purchasing policies that can be waived by the board. So if you're close to what you consider a sole source, a particularly unique type of thing, you make the case um for that and uh, you know, and, and see what the Board of Selectment thinks. On the other hand, though, MJ, if, are you anticipating around eleven thousand dollar cost based upon your estimates?
That, that's our initial estimate, yes.
So then it's, you know, um it's, it's just three, you know, requests to potential vendors. And if there's none other than this, then it is, I think you'd sell it again as a sole source.
Yeah, I'm not really.
I'd like to chime in on this, because uh, I spoke to Mitch over the weekend about other, called him for a different reason, but this came up and I kind of asked the same questions. And I said to Mitch, it's all right, I'm not gonna bring this up, but I, I, Charles has brought it up and I actually I feel, I'm not against the concept of this program at all. I am questioning that if we can argue that we can do this without bidding or without three um estimates, I happen to know of one person in town who runs a business that would say, gee, uh, I could have uh, bid on this or, or uh presented my case and, but there may be others and this person is not from Guilford and that's, you know, I know that's ridiculous in some ways, because we certainly use lots of professional people who are not from Guilford, but I'm just concerned about uh people in business in Guilford who might read about this and think, gee, I wonder why I didn't even, I, I didn't even have a chance to um put forward my program, you know, uh, I, I guess that's my concern. And maybe I'm overly concerned about it. And, and wouldn't it be really um, uh, thirteen and eleven if the schools do it? Wouldn't it be twenty-three thousand if the, if the numbers you gave us, that, I, I forget what you said, but eleven thousand per town employees and thirteen thousand per school employees? So that would be twenty-three or twenty-four, right?
Well, the, the Board of Selectmen would only be dealing with the town. So just, just so you know, if, if the town chooses not to do this, the Board of Ed could still go ahead and do it or vice versa. You know, so we're, we're hoping to go to the Board of Finance with a joint proposal, but it could be one or the other. So we're only looking for you to approve the town's portion.
Not to split hairs, but uh, there is a uh tacit agreement between the three boards that we do not expend anything from the the medical surplus budget unless all three boards approve of it. So at some point, we would be having discussions about approving the use of those funds uh, for the Board of Education for the very same program. So that you know, exceptionally, I, I don't have any problems with it. It's a benefit to the employees and that type of thing. My concern is, you know, we all watch the TV ads and everything, and it just seems, you know, looking at this brochure, you know, there's just eight thousand other, you know, get some fast programs out there and if this one has not been explored, other than, you know, a couple of other towns or something they're using, I think spending twenty-five thousand dollars deserves a little more uh investigation. You know, conceptually, it's a benefit to the employees, you know, it makes some sense. Exactly. The surplus medical fund, is that medical fund strictly from, you know, built up from deductions of employees or is that taxpayers putting into it?
I can't even just remember exactly. I know we have a surplus. I know we've used it for other valid reasons and, you know, financial manipulations. But I'm just trying to understand, is it? Is it strictly from?
It's both. It's a combination. So, so this is actually some of the employees' own money that uh is
Well, that's what I was trying to get at, essentially. Yeah. But it's not, it's both.
It's both.
It is. I mean, I know we make the contribution, right, budgets.
Is, is Chief Hyatt uh, uh, still on the call?
Uh, I believe so.
Yep.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Butch, do you have anything you'd like to say pro-econ on this?
Yeah, so uh, like Mitch kind of explained how we ended up here today. You know, one of the things in uh, in policing uh today is, is about officer wellness. So that's how my, my involvement came to have the conversations with Rob Nevin. I was speaking with a uh a friend, uh, Chief DeMayo over in Clinton. He was explaining how they had gone through it. Uh, he had brought Rob in, um, and it's, as Mitch said, it healthy habits, eating, that, that type of stuff. Uh, so I thought it would be a good thing for the police department in the wellness category. Uh, and because of the success in Clinton and in our uh, our uh sister town over in Madison as well, uh, Milford, where I live, uh, is using the same, the same system. That's why I brought it forward. I did not look at, at any other systems out there. Um, only because uh I did get good reviews on this, and that's why I was looking at it. And thinking that uh, you know, rather than just the police department, as Mitch said, uh, you know, with all the, the healthy lunches and things like that, that they try and do through uh, through the HR department, I thought it would be a good idea to, you know, maybe I thought it would be a good idea to, you know, maybe expand it out just, instead of just to an apartment, to other people in town. So that's all I have on it and that's how I got involved with taking a look at this and trying to bring it forward.
Thank you.
I really agree with this, that's helpful, Chief Hyatt, but I kind of agree with Sandy and Charlie about making sure this is, goes through the hoops a little bit, and I know that's tedious and it's a great idea. And I do think weight is a huge part of health and that's, you know, associating it with the medical, you know, funding it apart from there makes some sense, as long as it's, you know, there's not going to be some sense from the outside that we kind of short circuit the process a little bit. But I have one more thing, Charlie, which is, if I'm hearing this correctly, this, the five hundred dollars would be paid entirely on this one, there would be no fee by the participants? I mean, I'm not sure that's a great idea. I think you ought to have some buy-in, otherwise. I mean, is it going to be subsidized? No, again, I hate to micromanage, I'm sorry, it's a great idea and you feel like we're punching you sideways here. But I think some fee to participate is a great idea.
We did talk about that and I asked the other communities that did that. One of them, I forget which one, did have a buy-in at first. They ended up getting rid of it in the second round because they had people saying, you know, I can't, you know, afford to spend this much. This is something that, you know, if the town really feels they want my health to be better, you know, it was. Administratively, an issue too. I mean, you know, just trying to figure out, you know, who can and what the price point is. Is it fifty percent, is it ten percent, is it fifty bucks, is it a hundred bucks? I mean, you know, so in finding and talking to the other communities, because we're not the ones, you know, while I'd like to be one of the leaders in this, because I think it is, it'd be great for our employees. I also, you know, spent a lot of time talking to people from other communities that have done this and they found that it was, it worked out very well just having it subsidized by the community.
I think it's a way to.
As a benefit.
Deal that that situation, you have some money for fifty bucks upfront, if they complete the program, they get it back. And so that's just a structural issue. It just gives everybody some skin in the game. As far as the program, I agree two hundred percent. The easier we can make it for all of us to be healthier, the better. My struggle is, you know, hey, watch this TV, I mean, there's ten of these things out there and if this guy catches everybody's fancy fun, but, you know, I think it deserves when you start talking about tons of thousands of dollars.
I can't hear.
The taxpayers did explore it a little bit more, I can appreciate. Chief Hyatt has friends that are successful in it and maybe that's the way it'll turn out, but it deserves.
Yeah, again, I think we do open ourselves up to some criticism by selecting a agreement without having gone out and at least adhering to our traditional policies, which is get three quotes, all right? And you guys can analyze the services versus the price and come back with a recommendation on what you think is the best for our particular community. And in the end, we may find out somebody else's program is better. And then, you know, the last point I want to make, because years ago I participated in, but, you know, at fourteen dollars a month, Weight Watchers is a pretty effective program for an awful lot of people.
For people that stick to it.
For people that stick to it, because they're paying in on it and so forth. So I would like, and I think it's probably the center of this board, to revisit this in two weeks after you guys have had an opportunity to do some due diligence on it and give us an analysis of why these guys versus anybody else. And it's at your discretion to go out and find the other two, which is the typical purchasing policy discretion that is afforded to department heads. So, and then also, just think about, as what Charlie said, is there a way to get a hook in folks that, you know, you got to put a hundred bucks up to do this, but if you complete the program, you get it back. You get it back, right?
Yeah, I just, we owe it to the taxpayers for some little more effort.
Yeah, we had, just so you know about that, we had significant discussion with Rob Nevin about, you know, having that buy-in situation and we have come to an agreement with him that if someone does not go forward with the program, that he's not going to charge us either. Because if somebody does, he's very confident and once people sign up, they stick with him.
Well, you got to appreciate, his job is to sell the program, you know, that's his, once he sells the program.
And that may be a differentiator in your analysis, that he's willing to do that and others might not.
Yeah, I have no problem with it, that makes sense. But when it comes down to looking at, you know, things on paper, I think that Mitch knowing our employees and Chief knowing his employees and this particular program, I've done some research, it seems very well regarded. So, and perhaps members of a police department would not do something called Weight Watchers. I don't know, you know, there could be a lot of other things like that going on. So I have no problem with getting bids, but I think that's just a tool. I think for you to make your best decision on what I think is a great, really a great idea.
Agreed.
I think that, we'll take that and we'll be back with you.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Yeah, this is the time of year to be doing it.
Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have some discussions, possible action on the Affordable Housing Taxes and Ordinance as a result of the earlier public hearing. I'm going to look to Pete and Karen for some advice here. One of the things that I think is important is for us to acknowledge that we are going to move forward with an ordinance of some type. This, as it is currently written, if we were to approve this prior to resolution of some of the items that were talked about earlier, would that necessitate us coming back to a public hearing to change the ordinance again? So I guess the question is, should we wait to take action until such time as we have a document or the ordinance as tightly written as we wanted to? But is that, even if that changes from what we presented at public hearing, do we have to come back for another public hearing to change the parameters of the ordinance?
Well, here's how I've always looked at that particular question is, you know, if it's a very substantial rewrite, you know, best practices to do another public hearing. In this town, the public hearings, especially the way we do them for the ordinances just before the Board of Selectmen meeting, you know, unless our little tweaks are very minor, I'm going to suggest that, you know, we do it again. But let's see what we end up with.
I think it's safer, yeah. If there's going to be revisions, you could decide if it's truly just, you know, reworking language is one thing, but if you're making substantive changes, better off having another hearing.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, so that being the case, I'd like to charge Karen, Chris, Pete. And I don't, Sandy, do you want to participate in some of these discussions because of your representation of your committee? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll get a meeting together then, okay?
You got it, all right. Thanks for hanging in there, Chris, and we will try to get to the bottom of this sooner rather than later.
Okay, no, it's fine.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, item A, discussion and possible authorization allowing the First Selectmen to sign an amendment to the Woodruff Project Development Land Disposition Agreement with Neighbor Works New Horizons. I'll just give a, Pete, you want to give a brief summary of this one?
Sure, we got a phone call initially on this early December from Aaron Hoffman of Neighbor Works New Horizons on the Woodruff Property Project. If you look at the, if you recall, you probably don't, but the original land disposition agreement was dated January twenty-first, twenty-twenty. Literally couldn't have been any closer to the start of our pandemic. And there were milestones and deadlines built into that agreement that certainly didn't anticipate the disruption caused by the pandemic. So we were contacted with a request for extensions on several of the dates included in the initial land disposition agreement. I reviewed those, I also reviewed them, by the way, with the outside counsel who had prepared the land distribution, excuse me, land disposition agreement, Steve Mednick, and obviously talked with Matt as well and Mr. Hoffman and just asked him, you know, a little more detail. But basically, it's really all pandemic related. And I think we came to the conclusion, Matt, that the requests were reasonable. Attorney Mednick agreed, so we kept it very simple. We extended just the date that they were asking us to extend. But it does require an amendment, a formal amendment to the land disposition agreement, that's what you have before you.
Just the only thing I would add, the, they works New Horizons has been given a commitment to fund, but the state has yet to start to move on a significant number of these things owing to what's going on COVID-related and their own organizational stuff. So, and at this point, I don't think we want to back out of this project.
I wonder if it's time for us to start asking our state representatives and senator to intercede on this a little bit for us. I haven't done that yet, the committee hasn't done that yet, but we can talk about it, Matt, offline. But it just seems like we just are just sitting, 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 waiting for something to happen. I don't know, it's really frustrating.
And we've, and you're right, and we've also made some investments.
Yeah, yeah.
Town has made some investments relative to consultants, engineers and surveyors who are to do the subdivision of the property. So, yes, the answer is yes, we'll take the opportunity to talk to Christine and Sean to see if we can get this thing rolling. Or whatever, whatever requires, we'd like.
Okay.
I agree with that, I mean, it's a noisy wheel. There's a lot going on, but this is a priority for Guilford.
Is there, I mean, we're lucky to assess there's a lot of housing issues bubbling in this as well.
Yeah. I'll make the motion to approve the amendments to the DLD, LDL, whatever it is.
Charlie seconded, any other questions? No, okay, let me try your minds, select woman, Rudolph.
Aye.
And in the room? That motion carries, thank you. Okay, appointments and resignations, what happened? This might be a first.
I thought there was something wrong.
And request for town property, another one. Committee reports, I think we just talked about the Sandy's meeting. Correspondence? Old business? I think we can take up Zen City, Charlie, do you have something else first on your old business?
It could be either old or new, so let's do Zen.
Zen City, Jonathan, you had provided us with a pretty substantial discount on the typical package. Does that, that number still hold, what was it, seventy-five hundred, was that the number?
It met up to seven thousand.
Seven thousand, yeah, price just got. So I'd like to move forward, because I think this will help inform us, because otherwise it's going to be the five of us talking to the people we normally talk to and then some folks who feel they need to engage us. But I think this gives us a tool to use and to reference. We not necessarily, you know, we may personally disagree with what the results of this survey are, but it creates a tool for us to use.
I agree two hundred percent, you know, statistics and polling and everything, it is a tool. I think our decision, you know, has to include, you know, what's going on in the community. You know, I think any poll though has the potential to become a popularity poll versus what's right, wrong. But I do think it's very important that we, as Board of Selectmen, know what the community is thinking because you're right, it's not an individual personal agenda item type thing. I mean, we have to make a decision for the community for generations to come at this point.
And I think some of the concerns about the, that you raised about reliability of polls, especially on the political side, it's really important to understand, and I may not, Jonathan may be leaving this out, but certainly the specific, we're going to get a report, the questions, the methodology, the, how the people were reached. There's components to the results that we don't necessarily need to be able to do the statistics on, but it will help inform whether it's.
It's another tool, we have to understand it.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it's going to be helpful.
I think so too, but before we do the survey, do we do any other kind of educational? I mean, we can't have a traditional gathering at the community center, we do something so that people can educate.
Yeah, I think the timing on this is important. I had originally thought we wanted to kick this off early in the year to give us time to put an advisory question on the referendum. I'm loath to do that, just because I don't, I'm not sure we want to earn the referendum with that kind of activity. And particularly since we may be putting another question on there related to the land acquisition. So I do know that, and this is not, this is sort of one-sided. I do know that Bo Hune and his folks have reached out to municipal leaders and community leaders, myself, Paul Freeman, I think some of the faith-based leaders about posting something in January to kick off the general discussion. Their bent is going to be largely how dangerous it is for children, what the damage is. So that, they're going to be coming at it from one very. So your point's very well taken. Do we start out by having, you know, a Zoom meeting sometime at the end of January? Just as a general, just to give folks an opportunity to just weigh in and then launch something? Does that, that sound like?
I have no problem with that, because, you know, education is so important in a subject like this, that people understand, you know, what it's all about.
I agree.
Parts of this ordinance that, one second, Sandy, there are parts of your ordinance, potential ordinance, that has specifics, you know, the one for community and there's a whole bunch of really specific things that not everybody's aware of, they hear marijuana. But to Susan's point about questions, I'm hoping the poll, you know, gives us an opportunity to develop other questions, because, you know, it'd be interesting to see.
Even go back for a second round.
That's what I'm thinking, I think an educational or informational one about we're doing the polling, this is what the ordinance could be, it couldn't be, or whatever. And then even you could have some input with the questions that they ask, a little bit, the open-endedness and that type of thing. But then come back in the end saying, well, you know, this is what the community is saying, what do you think?
Well, and also the other.
Sandy, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I agree, because at some point, there's going to be a decision made and there will be people who will be happy about it and people who will be unhappy about it. So I think the more bullet points that we can say, this is what we did that led up to this discussion. I mean, it's, you know, the people who are unhappy will continue to be, but I think we, I think we can drag it out a little bit in a good way, so that we can say, we really tried to engage people, we really tried to have meetings, we really had the poll, you know, we really want to hear from both sides if you're out there to be heard, that's all.
Let people react to it.
Yeah.
And I can certainly take the opportunity, because I received a text from Ben Reiner, the reporter for the Guilford Courier, who is always looking for stories. Give them the opportunity to start to tee this up. And they could be a conduit for exactly what Charlie just said, here are the details, right? And this is what can be done, there's only going to be one outlet, the one dispensary or whatever. Great, I have a sense that you guys are approving this, moving forward with this. We have funds in the technology account, reserve technology account that I think this is very appropriate for. So that would be the funding vehicle we look to use. Sounds great to me, okay. I don't know that we need a motion to go forward, just authorize me to do so. Good. All right, Jonathan, get that contract document over at some point.
Sure, I'll read forward it to you very shortly, but thank you once again for the opportunity to speak and be new.
Thank you. One question, are you going to be landlocked in Australia for a while? I know, is Israel going to let you back in? Uh, you have one, one question. Are you going to, are you going to be landlocked in Australia for a while? I know, yeah, is Israel going to let you back in?
I, so uh, I had a very interesting journey to get here. So uh, we're based a little bit of Israel. Uh, this is the first time I've been able to see family in two years, which is been uh, very exciting. But uh, we had to fly through Dubai to get here. But because of the dual um, red rain country list of what the United Arab Emirates is, we had to stay in the airport for twelve hours without leaving without this. So we had to like, just like go from one cafe to another, just sort of busy. Um, but it was a lot of fun. But hopefully I don't get too stuck here. But um, and you know, there are worse places in the world to get stuck than Australia, so that happens.
All right, Jonathan, thank you very much for the work you've done so far. We look forward to continuing.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
All right, Charlie, you have another piece, uh, new business maybe, old business.
Oh, yes. Uh, not that I want to put any more work into the engineering department, but remember the hazardous waste uh, it could. I'm just wondering if it, if it makes sense to do that again in the spring or something.
I think we have it in the budget for the spring. Uh, we we included it in last year's budget, uh, for
I I didn't stop to think about that, but I was thinking about uh, cleaning my garage.
Speaking of the year's resolutions, it's, yeah. And and actually, I do know that Janice uh, was negotiating with uh, the Hazmat Central.
I mean, it was just so successful. It made some sense.
Wildly successful.
On a, on a re- On a related note to that, um, I know it took a while, Matt, for you to get the Waste Transfer Committee together from both towns. Have they started to meet yet and do they have anything to talk to us about or is it too, is that too soon?
Actually, um, I think what we'll do is have Janice uh, come in uh, on our next meeting, give an update. Yes, that committee has been meeting in earnest for quite some time. There were a couple, was one member dropped off, so they're a little, they're a short one, but um, the uh, they, they are a very active and proactive group. Um, uh, I say this at the sake of offending people, but there may be a degree of micromanagement, but I think that is not unusual, given that this is a brand-new committee looking to find out more about how it operates and what it does. And uh, Janice has done a good job of, I think, keeping them within the framework of what an advisory committee is supposed to do. Uh, but they've come up with some great suggestions on improving traffic flow, signage, some of that kind of stuff. Uh, they will uh, be, they know they they have a finance subcommittee that's looking at whether or not we need to do something with the rates because of the increasing, increased burden on tipping costs and the lack of uh, markets for recyclables because that's impacting the uh, the the uh, the finances. So there, I think, I think they're, they're well-intentioned and they're well underway to be in a productive group.
Because one, one thing I remember when you first discussed this early on, probably like three years ago or more, there were some immediate um, issues there that that had, that had some safety implications. And I I think that, that Guilford went forward and did a few things even before that committee was together. So um, this all sounds very encouraging, but I just wanted to ask about it because we haven't talked about it in such a long time.
Thank, thank you, Sandy, for bringing that up. And yes, we did move forward with the series. We actually allocated some capital, uh, some bonding, uh, a couple of years ago. Included, there's a payloader and then some other things which Madison uh, is sharing the debt service retirement cost with us. We bill them every year out, in addition to uh, what we bill them for the, their, their percent, percentage of the operating losses.
Okay. Thank you.
As Guilford's rep, uh, regional order, if there's anything that can be, I I don't know how much it's coordinated with that program, but it seemed to me there was some coordination. But it's needed.
Yeah. All right. Um, anything else? No? Fantastic. Good meeting. Good meeting today. Uh, nice way to start, nice way to start the year. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Thanks, everybody. Sandy, have a good trip.
I didn't get through to the ferry yet, so I'm sorry. I could have come to the meeting.
My, my son spent two days trying to get back from San Diego.